Good evening. This regular meeting of October 14th, 2019 of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please. Mr. Barton?
Here.
Ms. Bradley?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Prohoska?
Here.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Sancy?
Here.
Ms. Whitman?
Here.
We have with us tonight students from Prescott Elementary School who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If they can come forward and introduce themselves, they'll introduce themselves first.
Hi, everybody. My name is Damala Remy and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Cameron Loy Remy and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is James Smith and I'm in fifth grade.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that to approve the Board of Education as submitted. Approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. I move the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on September 9th and the special meeting on September 30th, 2019, as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on September 9th and the special meeting on September 30th, 2019, as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. All right, we have some hearing bonds, motions that we need to make on our $10 million infrastructure sales.
Can I make recommendations first?
Okay.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution supporting the proposed issuance of approximately $10 million school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue refunding bonds.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the resolution supporting the proposed issuance of approximately $10 million school infrastructure sales service and use tax revenue refunding bonds. Is there any discussion?
Kevin?
Yeah.
We have a public hearing now.
So, it wasn't in the listings of how to do this, so what do you want me to do? You can just state that it's the public hearing if there's anyone that would like to speak on this behalf. All right. Anybody want to talk about our bond can come forward at this time. Kevin would like to give a little information. Mr. Kelleher?
Too bad those Prescott kids left. I thought they were, this was something they were deeply interested in.
I know, they would.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Reingans. Yes, tonight we are asking you to approve the sale of approximately $10 million in sales tax bonds. These are to refinance our 2012 and 2013 bonds, the current interest rates and principal payments as we move forward with those older bonds. The interest rate is scheduled to go up to around 3%. We believe we'll be in the current market, we can get approximately 2% on the refinanced bonds. So, Piper Jaffray, our financial advisor, has said they think we can save about $300,000 by issuing these new bonds to replace the 2012 and 2013 series. Any questions on that?
Now we need to roll call vote.
Yes, just a minute, please. I'm making a note here. All right. Roll call, it has been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Barton?
Aye.
Ms. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Prohoska?
Aye.
Ms. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Sancy?
Aye.
Ms. Whitman?
Aye.
And that vote carries. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to board salute, and I believe we have a few out there. We can start.
I can start. I have a board salute that goes to both senior and Hempstead High School freshmen in their efforts to welcome freshman students through the annual Respect Retreats. These retreats are at both schools, feature upper-division students serving as leaders, and providing a day that helps freshmen feel connected, empowered, motivated to succeed in school, and to be outstanding examples of character. Congratulations to all those involved that put this together for these freshman students.
Great. Thank you.
I have a board salute. Board salute was out to the organizing team and many generous supporters who made the new greenhouse at Roosevelt Middle School a reality. Today, the school officially opened this new outdoor classroom, which will provide real-world learning opportunities for students in a variety of subject areas. It will support the work of the school's Active Gardening Club. Project was funded entirely with donated funds and grants. The program's two largest contributors were the Grandview Gallup Incorporated, made up of the Telegraph Herald, the Mississippi Valley Running Association, United Point Health, the Shoe Shack and Hy-Vee, as well as the Mercy One Community Benefit Grant. Other supporters included Barred Materials, Farm Credit Services of America, Sustainable Dubuque, Old Kids Foundation, Iowa Department of Public Health, 5210, Tysons, Hy-Vee. I happen to go out today, Nancy and Anderson and myself were there, and we witnessed the greenhouse. I understand our building and ground, folks put it together, it's very sturdy. We were in there, I suppose this afternoon was probably about 55 degrees outside, and what was it in there, about 112, 115 in there, something like that, so it will be a very, it'll be very interesting. Mr. Reingans says he's going to give, whenever we have the snow, snow reports, he's going to give them from there.
We'll too.
It's perfect in here. Yeah, yeah, 120 degrees in here, yeah. What are you complaining about? Anyway, thank you to our buildings and grounds, many staff and students and volunteers who helped bring this project to life, so thank you to all.
It was interesting during the dedication ceremony that they talked about the many different curricular areas that would be using it. We assume science, but it will be math and social studies and language arts.
Thank you. All right.
A board salute for going to Dr. Neil Rawluis and the Fullness of Life Chiropractic Organization. They make an annual school supplies donation, which really helps kids who have difficulty having the needed supplies to do the work of being a student and successful in school. So, we thank Dr. Rawluis and the Fullness of Life Chiropractic Organization for this very helpful support. Appreciate it.
Anyone else with a board salute? All right. I move the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Anyone wishing to address the board at this time can come forward.
Good evening. Tammy Dear, 2139 Clark Drive. I know, do I have to say that every time? I don't want to pay no rent.
Two ladies.
I'm kidding. Okay, so I'm back, and tonight I have Allison here from Hempstead to kind of brag about Hempstead High School and tell you about some great things that are happening there.
Hi, my name's Allison Rahassal. I think I've met most of you. I'm from, address 683 West 11th Street here in Dubuque. I'm a member of the Hempstead Pride Team. We are the PBIS team at Hempstead, and we've always had a freshman orientation for our parents to help them become familiar with Hempstead High School and what we offer our incoming freshmen. And three years ago, our team decided we really needed to be more inclusive, which is one of our acronyms, for all of our parents, and invite them into our school to experience some school spirit like their children do, as well as have an opportunity to meet their students' parents in a little bit more of an informal setting rather than conference time. This year, we combined that night with our counselor's freshman night, and while their program was going on, we had a freshman mixer in our courtyard where we had music and games and pizza for our freshmen, and when that part of the evening was over, we began our own pep rally. The school band played this song, the school song, as people entered into the gym, and we have introductions from our administration. We asked the staff and students, with students currently enrolled at Hempstead, to lead us in the pledge. Mr. Cool will then come up and ask people to stand if they have graduated from Hempstead or if they have students at Hempstead, and by the end of his little spiel, everybody in the whole place is standing. And then, we move on to a series of questions about what pride is, what it stands for, and what we really expect out of our students. After that is when the fun begins. We have a lip sync contest where we involve parents and students and staff. We have four teams that will then be assigned to a song, and they step out in the hallway and begin planning their little routine. While that's going on, we play a game between the different groups of our own version of Hungry Hungry Hippo, where we have parents and students come down, and usually the student will take their place belly down on the little cart, and parents are holding their feet and running around with a laundry basket, grabbing as many colored balls as they can to find a winning team. So, after that's completed, then we come back into our lip sync contest, which has been a blast, and it's amazing what some parents can put together. We actually, for two years in a row, had the same winner. He was fantastic, and he always brings the baby with him because he knows that's a definite end. When we're done with this, we thank the parents for coming, and we invite them then to go out through the school and follow their students' schedule to meet with their teachers just to, so they can put a name to a face, and maybe ask a few questions that they might have. All in all, it's a great time, and we do this every year. We'll do it again next fall, and we would love to have the members of the school board come and attend. In fact, we were kind of hoping Mr. Reingans would be there this year since he's got a freshman there.
I heard something about lip sync contests. Fortunately, I was meeting that night.
So, it's called Meet the Mustang Night, and again, we, every fall, and you, everyone is welcome to attend, and we would love to have you. And on a personal note, I would just like to say I lost my mother a couple of weeks ago, and I received a beautiful card from this group, and I really appreciate it. Thank you so much for your thoughts.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the board can come forward. Okay. I move the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Consent agenda.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. If there are any board members wishing to have any items removed, there being none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
Just a comment that all of those items on the consent agenda have been discussed at our committee meetings, and so while we don't have a discussion here, it's going to happen.
Thank you. All right, our facilities and support services report. Mr. Donahue?
Yep, committee met on October 7th up at the Cornerstone Academy. We include, which included a tour of that recently almost complete project, and it's very impressive, and I think there was a nice, some nice coverage in the newspaper around that. So, a great venue, but a number of things, action items for tonight. First, I would move that the Board of Education approve the naming of the Hempstead High School Concession Stand near Moody Gymnasium as Potts Concessions after longtime Administrator Gerald Jerry Potts.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the naming of Hempstead High School Concession Stand near Moody Gymnasium as Potts Concessions after longtime Administrator Gerald Jerry Potts. Is there any discussion?
I would just point out that there, the district has a process around naming different buildings or parts of buildings, et cetera, and this one obviously came through that. We heard a presentation a couple of months ago from the, from the nominators, and I think it's a great, great opportunity to recognize somebody did a lot of things for the district.
As somebody who was personally reprimanded by Jerry Potts as a student?
Many times.
Multiple times, and multiple times when I should have been, I'd like to just mention that he really was truly very good at his job, in case there's any concern. Look at the way you turned up.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
My move that the Board of Education approve the submission of the request to the School Budget Review Committee in the amount of $5,998,091, or as determined by the Iowa Department of Education following the DE audit review, in modified supplemental amount to provide 100% spending authority for the 2019 special education deficit funded through a cash reserve levy.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the submission of the request to the School Budget Review Committee in the amount of $5,998,091, or as determined by the Iowa Department of Education following DE audit review, in modified supplemental amount to provide 100% spending authority for 2019 special education deficit funded through a cash reserve levy. Is there any discussion?
Well, as the name implies, there's, the state allows us to request this spending authority to, from them. This is an amount that actually continues to grow. I think it's probably about a million and a half higher than last year, which is a concern because it shifts this, this burden to the taxpayers, but I would point out that most of the change is due to new weightings as determined by the special ed folks relative to the level of support that the students need that participate in that. I think generally, the costs that we incurred stayed the same, but that weighting really resulted in lower revenue to the district, which then obviously increased the deficit.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
The second, the second part of that is with our ELL program, but I move that the Board of Education approve the submission of the request to the School Budget Review Committee in the amount of $255,942, or as determined by the Iowa Department of Education following the DE audit review, in modified supplemental amount to provide 100% spending authority for the 2019 actual ELL program costs funded through a cash reserve levy.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the submission of the request to the School Budget Review Committee in the amount of $255,942, or as determined by the Iowa Department of Education following DE audit review, in modified supplemental amount to provide 100% spending authority for 2019 actual ELL program costs funded through a cash reserve levy. Is there any discussion?
Similar to the special education, again, the process is the same. Send the request to the state to provide the spending authority for the deficit. In this particular case, I think it's, it's higher than last year, but really, it's due primarily to increased enrollment in the, in the ELL program, so it's more, more use for the district.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
All right, now we move on to building stuff. My move that the Board of Education approve certificates of substantial completion 1 and 2 on the Alta Vista Alternative Learning Center Edition renovation project in the amounts of $10,000 and $15,000.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve certificates of substantial completion 1 and 2 on the Alta Vista Alternative Learning Center Edition renovation project in the amounts of $10,000 and $15,000. Is there any discussion?
These just represent final payments?
This is the final payment for the contractors?
Correct, yep.
There's, I believe there's a little bit of retainage. We, if they go through the punch list, make sure all the, you know, small pieces work.
Retainage is the next motion.
Oh, sorry.
These are the last two requests for payment, in addition to the last one.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
All right. I move that the Board of Education approve ports and constructions requests for early release of retained funds for the Alta Vista Alternative Learning Center Edition renovation project in the amount of $225,615.50 in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law, and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve ports and construction requests for early release of retained funds for the Alta Vista Alternative Learning Center Edition renovation project in the amount of $225,615.50 in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law, and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution. Is there any discussion?
As previously noted, there is a certain amount of money that obviously with all the contracts that are held back to make sure that obviously that the construction's done to our, you know, early, to our satisfaction, and I know the building grounds, as well as the architects, have reviewed that and support the, the early release of that retainage.
And we do need to have a roll call vote on this, so roll call vote, please. Ms. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Prohoska?
Aye.
Ms. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Sancy?
Aye.
Ms. Whitman?
Aye.
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education award the contract purchase order for the pilot Buildings and Grounds solar panel project to Blue Sky Solar LLC in the amount of $67,365.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education award the contract purchase order for the pilot Buildings and Grounds solar panel project to Blue Sky Solar LLC in the amount of $67,365. Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
Oh, I just like to say it's a good thing to see that we're moving in the direction of utilizing solar. Is this our first big solar project in the district?
It is, correct. It's a bit of a pilot to see how that might apply to us in the future.
So, it's a, yeah, so it's a pilot, and no better person to start with than Bill's Buildings, but it is a, it is a project that's expected to produce over the life of the equipment about a $300,000 utility savings, and it has, I think, about an eight-year payback, if I remember right, based on the initial investment.
Good.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution offering for sale by public bid a 2,000 Chevrolet Step Van and a stage right Z800 Coral and Band Risers, and set the date, time, and place for possible public hearing as November 11th, 2019, at 5:30 PM at Keystone Area Education Agency.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution offering for sale by public bid a 2,000 Chevrolet Step Van and a stage right Z800 Coral and Band Risers, and set the date, time, and place for possible public hearing as November 11th, 2019, at 5:30 PM at Keystone Area Education Agency. Is there any discussion?
This is Bill Burkhardt's equivalent of eBay, where he takes and disposes of equipment that we no longer need, but yet still has value, and we've had a tremendous record of really getting a lot more than we probably figured we ever did. We, as we noted at the committee meeting, we used to do the large garage sale out in the parking lot out here, and I think we must have been not asking enough, we must have been too easy on the negotiators, but this has really done well, and Bill and his team do a fantastic job of putting things out there, and we've really, we've done well, so this will allow us to move that along, expedite the sale of those items.
We never worked so hard to sell a 20-year-old van in our life. I'm just imagining Bill and Charlie out there, somebody says, hey, can you go 50 cents cheaper on the van and throw in the Afghan and the old Automan that's ripped up?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
Two more. I move that the Board of Education approve the 2018-19 Internal Control Policies and Procedures Report.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the 2018-19 Internal Control Policies and Procedures Report. Is there any discussion?
I would just point out, you know, the district's been recognized many times relative to the quality of its financial reporting and the good work that Rick and Kevin and others do, but this is the stuff that's kind of behind the curtain that nobody ever sees, all the internal policies, the procedures that really make that happen, and so this is just our annual review of those, or always tweak where we see opportunities to do that and approve those, or we get good feedback through our audits, but this is where they make the sausage back here in the procedures. Right, Kevin?
Yes, indeed.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
And I move the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report. And discussion, Mr. Kelleher?
Good evening again. Thank you again, Mike. It'll be hard to top those comments, but we'll start with revenue. Looking at your packets on page 109, 110, and 111, you'll see that the three funds that we generate, a lot of funds, money is generated from property tax revenue. Those percentages, even though we're 25% through the year, are only at 14%, 15% roughly, and that is because we receive our largest property tax payments in the month of October and the month of April. So, there, we've got those this month, those percentages will increase when you see the budgets next month. An expense category I'd like to talk about is on page 113 of your packet, has to do with the management fund. You will see when the expenses year-to-date, as well as the encumbrances. It's over budget already. If you remember, we pay a majority of those payments in July for early retirement and our insurance, so that's a big portion of it, but the reason it's over budget is because when we did the budget last February for the early retirement payment, we significantly underestimated the amount of people that actually were going to retire. If you remember, we did that enhanced offer, offer to our staff, we had many more people take that than what we had budgeted for, to the tune of about a half million dollars. So, that's the reason that particular fund is overspent compared to budget. I have to say there's plenty of revenue or dollars in the management fund to cover that, so it's not, you don't have to worry about it being overspent.
I guess I would add one quick piece to that. Obviously, we do that, early retirement, sort of because it does save significant dollars in our general fund over years, as the folks that are either not retired, if you don't replace it, obviously that's significant savings, or if we hire somebody with less experience, which is almost always the case, then this is significant savings there, too. So, just for general clarification, yes, it's an expense, but in the long run, it's significant savings to the district, particularly the general fund.
It'll be a very short payback to that expenditure.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Okay, that takes us to Mr. Sancy and our ed programs policy report.
Yeah, so typically, for the viewers who are watching right now, we do have a long meeting with our ed program making sausage as well, but typically, we review a lot of policies, and then also, we meet with a lot of our administrators or teachers who come and give us an update of what goes on in their building, what goes on in their world. And this month, we had Brenda and Ms. May come and talk to us about brain health, and we're cited as a school board that we made that a legislative priority, and we recognize that in our school buildings, that that is a growing problem, that a lot of our students are dealing with different brain health, and we recognize that either our state partners are going to have to give us more resources so we can best support our students, and/or we're going to have to have our legislators give our community partners the right resources so that we can best support our students and our teachers as well, but I think we're super excited that we're shining a light on this issue, and that we have community partners who are also doing the same thing, so, but that was the biggest thing that we discussed was the brain health, and again, you know, we really need the support from our state partners so that we can best service our, our growing students who are dealing with this challenge, I would say.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, that takes us to new business and talking about brain health. I do have a proclamation here recognizing October as Brain Health Awareness Month. I shall read that. Whereas brain health is critical to everyone's well-being, and whereas the brain is an organ susceptible to disease and disorder, and whereas awareness and education is pivotal to end the stigma around mental illness, and whereas with awareness and education, coordinated services, and treatment, those individuals with brain health issues and those that provide services in this area can work together for recovery in a stigma-free environment. Therefore, I, Tammy-
Therefore, I, Tammy Ryan, on behalf of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education, do hereby proclaim October 2019 as Brain Health Awareness Month, signed on this 14th day of October 2019."
I move the Board of Education approve the Brain Health Awareness Month proclamation.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Brain Health Awareness Month proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
And now, we have another proclamation that we will recognize. In addition, today being Columbus Day, we're also recognizing it as Indigenous Peoples' Day. And this proclamation reads, "Whereas, the Dubuque Community School District is proud to be a diverse and culturally rich school district, recognizing that the ver, the, the variety heritage of our students and staff create a vibrant environment in which to learn and live, and whereas, a growing number of cities and school districts in the United States have recognized Indigenous Peoples' Day as an opportunity to celebrate indigenous heritage and resiliency. And whereas, the Dubuque Community School District recognizes that the indigenous peoples of this hemisphere have lived on these lands since time immemorial, and that Dubuque itself was built upon the homelands of the Musquekee, Ho-Chunk, Potawatomi, and other indigenous peoples of this region. And whereas, the Dubuque Community School District acknowledges and honors the historic, cultural, and, and contemporary significance of the indigenous peoples of the lands that also became known as the Americas. And whereas, the Dubuque Community School District seeks to bring greater understanding regarding indigenous cultures and the enormous contributions they have made and continue to make. Therefore, now therefore, I, Tammy Ryan, on behalf of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education, do hereby proclaim October 14th, 2019 as Indigenous Peoples' Day, signed on this, on, uh, on this 14th day of October 2019."
I move that the Board of Education approve the Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation as read.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation. All those in favor-
Discussion, can we do discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, discussion, please, sorry.
I would be remiss if I did not share that I am 116th Musquekee, and, uh, the history is fascinating. It truly, and, and I really do think there's a lot to be gained by spending more time talking about our native heritage here. Real quick story, and it's gonna be very brief, but, uh, the Sauk and the Fox tribes came together to form the Musquekee Nation. So, like Sauk City up in Wisconsin, uh, they're a part of that. And, uh, the Black Hawk Wars, right around the time of the War of 1812, so I'm not sure when that happened, um, the- That, that was when the Musquekee Nation was being pushed ever westward. And, uh, I would go, I would just wanna contend to this day that we would have won as a Musquekee people. We would have beat the United States if it weren't for that turncoat Benedict Arnold Chief Keakuk, who, uh, sided with the United States back then, because the Sauk-Fox-Musquekee Nation had a deal going with the British in the War of 1812. So, I don't know who gets credit for being craftier, uh, Chief, uh, Black Hawk, for seeing where this was going, so he sided with the British, or Chief Keakuk who said, "Hey, I see where this is going. I'm siding with the United States." But it truly is absolutely fascinating history, and so it's, I think, in addition to Columbus Day, which certainly has its own history and all sorts of debate that goes with that, but I think it is fascinating to spend a little bit of time recognizing, in some formal manner, the, uh, the great native history around here, too. I know that, I wanna say the Potawatomi tribe is also, I believe they are also Winnebago. So, like Winnebago County in Illinois, I believe, actually refers to the Potawatomi. That was mentioned in the proclamation, too, so, yep, interesting stuff.
Feel like I learn something new about you every single day, besides being a Patriot fan.
You know, there you go, and most of it's true. Most of it's true.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Yeah.
We have one more. Go ahead.
I move the Board of Education appoint Mike Siz temporary Board Secretary in the event the Board Secretary must be absent from a meeting.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education appoint Mike Siz temporary Board Secretary in the event the Board Secretary must be absent from a meeting. Is there any discussion?
What kind of vetting process?
And, and this'll be a roll call vote.
It took a while to get a second, so.
We had a brainstorm, rock, paper, scissors over here.
That's all the guy, Anderson's got a date after this.
You gotta walk out of here with four. I don't know if that's gonna happen.
Wow.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Just so the community knows, Mike Siz is our, what's your official title, Mike?
Communication.
What do you do?
Chief Communications Officer.
There we go.
Should Joni not be able to make it to a meeting, which, yes, it happens, I know.
I don't think it's happened since I've been on the board for four years, so preparation.
They'll have to get some new tires for Joni or something for her vehicle.
Anyway. Are there any board member or administrative issues?
Just a reminder that October is the month that we have a second board meeting, so two weeks from tonight, we will meet, I believe, back in this room, uh, to discuss where we're at, uh, early in the school year with our priority initiatives.
And a, a reminder also, on, is it November, November 5th, the election, uh, the Revenue Purpose Statement will be-
Yeah, that's a big one.
Out for our voters.
Yep, great. Anything else? Alright, we are adjourned.